I told you we could get national.
Leah, Leah, who knows the king, be hell out Bobby.
That's my Fred Astaire dancing partner coming up the same eye they are.
Alright guys, it's uh six oh one, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, first thing is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, anyone second?
I'll say it.
Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand. You just said it.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here listening.
He almost did, he's got his hands in his pocket, I see.
Went like that.
Uh, next thing we have on the agenda is uh resolution for David Spence.
Oh.
Yeah, David, we're gonna take care of you right off the bat.
Alright, we've got a resolution here, did you wanna present it Hazel, or did you want me to?
Nobody's taking my picture, go ahead.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll guess I'll present.
Let her read it.
Resolution and recognize- recognition and appreciation of distinguished service by David Spence. Whereas Smith County Planning Commission's mission to promote and coordinate comprehensive long-range planning, growth management, transportation, and environmental protection, and provide recommendations to the Smith County Board of Supervisors regarding land use and other comprehensive plan issues. And whereas the Planning Commission has been fortunate to have a dedicated citizen, as David Spence committed to the mission of the Planning Commission, and whereas during his service on the Planning Commission, David Spence provided nine years and four months of service from September twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and provided invaluable insight, perspective, and guidance to the Planning Commission to assist the Board of Supervisors in fulfilling its mission. And whereas the Planning Commission seeks to publicly recognize David Spence's commitment, dedication, and invaluable contributions to the Planning Commission and its mission. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Smith County Planning Commission acknowledges and extends its gratitude to David Spence for his distinguished service to the Planning Commission and his lasting contributions to the Planning Commission and its mission. Be it resolved, that this resolution is saved in the permanent minutes of Smith County Planning Commission, and a copy of this rev- resolution is given to David Spence on this twenty-seventh day of February, twenty twenty-five.
We gotta sign it first, David.
Okay.
She didn't have us do that, but I'm sorry. Are we gonna laminate it, or anything like that?
I got my panty.
Yeah, I said I had that here, it's probably bad, it was what I thought, it's cold.
I'm putting that forward, getting mud in my ear.
Yeah, I know.
That's pretty nice, that really, really is.
Well, we appreciate you David, we're gonna miss you, I know I am.
I've missed y'all, I'll be honest with you, I've thought about you lots of times.
Now you can go cut corn.
I'm gonna go home. I'm gonna go home and check on Hunter.
Take your gun, will ya?
I like that, I cut her one with. But I thank y'all very, 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 very much. Huh?
We appreciate working with you.
I am gonna go. Y'all take care.
See you David.
Leah.
I'll see you soon.
Junior.
Big dude. I'll write for some of that.
Yeah, hold the tears, hold the tears till you get out the parking lot. Hold the tears till you get the parking lot, because I don't, I don't think I can handle it.
I'd have done it, but I got dry eyes, I got no tear duct.
Oh, okay, well.
And that's a true story.
We're hearing life and going down the house.
I feel for y'all. These are good.
Okay, now. Now, we need to do an election of officers, so.
Need to appoint hers.
Pardon, I thought, did I hear Becca?
I do hear Becca.
So do we wanna make Becca the?
Well, whoever, you gotta appoint somebody, you gotta appoint somebody.
That's only.
I need to appoint a temporary chairperson. Do you want to be the temporary chairperson? Okay, we are going to uh nominate you to be the chairperson, so then you take it from here. Alright, so, do we have any nominations for chairperson?
I nominate Hazel.
Okay.
I'll turn that on.
Don't you say like that. Excuse me. I'm gonna sit somewhere else next to her. Sit on the other side of me, wherever, see it, see us for a while. Cause we're ready for a cushion now, I'm gonna do you.
Alright.
Did we get a sec?
Was there anyone else nominated?
Can I make a motion nomination, please?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, I now turn it over to Hazel.
Oh, thank you. Back here, okay, the uh next is to nominate a vice-chairperson.
Hold on, need Junior.
I'll second.
Okay, go, motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous, except for Junior. Okay. The secretary, uh nomination for the secretary.
I'll wait up.
Yeah, he passed.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And then, the clerk.
It, normally, I mean, I'm the administry now, so I mean, if you all, normally we just stick with me and just do Kelsey's.
Kelsey, excellent, I'll save it.
Both of us, and then we'll have all of our bases covered.
You won't leave nobody out.
If you all want to.
I mean, if, if one of you all wanna do all this paperwork.
I mean, I, I wanna make sure, I don't wanna hurt people.
I'm confident.
Alright, Kelsey. Becca, alright, alright, me too.
Appreciate it much.
All in favor? Okay. Alright, so, now moving on, uh number five, we uh review the minutes. And dates from twenty twenty-five. Let's remove, review the meeting dates for twenty twenty-five, how's that? I was looking at minutes and everything else. Did we? Yeah, that's the one that we usually have an issue with.
Yeah, um, we put on there November twentieth and the eighteenth, that would cover Thanksgiving and um Christmas.
Okay, so December the eighteenth and November twentieth.
Yeah, if that's the two dates you all wanna put in there for those.
Okay, but, okay. Um, does anyone have any other suggestions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now, the next is adopt the uh December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Have you all had time to look over them? Do you see any problems?
I didn't see any.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt them?
I have a motion to adopt.
Have a second. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand.
No, I need to abstain, she wasn't here for the meeting, so.
I'll leave this. Okay, is there anywhere in here that I introduce people to our new person?
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can speak back anytime, or we can do it in other business, or?
Yeah, we'll do that in other business, we'll put you on hold. Um, adopt the operating procedures.
So normally, I don't know if you all saw, normally we have a really long elaborated operating procedures. I tried to just sum it up into one page. Um, I don't know that we've ever really had to pull them out for anything, but I just wanted to shrink it down a bit, and if that's okay with you all?
That's perfectly alright.
I think the other ones were a bit wordy.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt these procedures?
I move.
Okay, give me a second. Alright, all in favor? Okay. And adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six FY budgets.
So, currently our budget just has our minutes, or I'm sorry, our mileage and our membership payment, or no, year olds payment. I am sick today, so my head's a little foggy. Um, but years ago, we had a line item for bud- or for um education, and we would, we had money to be able to send people for training and things like that. And I know um here, the past two months, I think, I've been sending you all a publication from the American Planters Association, and are you all liking that? Do you feel good about that, or, you know, I sort of just wanna gauge you all, what do you all think about education? Um, if it's something you all want to explore, um I propose to um maybe request the board give us some line item for education, so that we can all, you all can, you know, go to some classes, take some training. Um, I know that there's a really good program, it's called the um Certified Planning Commissioners Program. Um, I can't remember, I had the cost of it. Uh, it, it, it is a six-month program, um you go, uh when I went, when I was here the first time, um I think I went for like three or four days to Virginia Hollins, to the higher ed center down there. Um, Michael Chandler was the doctor that presented that course at the time, and um they gave us a whole stack of reading material, and tests, or not tests, but we had a little bit of homework to do, um just read the books, turn in some things. And then we met again six months later and finished out the course. Um, but it was, it was pretty good knowledgeable information. Um, so that might be something that you all would be interested in. Um, I think that uh there's probably a lot of online stuff now even that I can research and look into, to see if there's any things there. It just, it boils down to, you know, what you all want to do, and what, what you have time for, and what to be interested in. So, and there's not many, there's, I can request it, but you know, our budget's being cut this year, so. I think that the uh, the Certified Planning Commissioners Program, I think it's close to um, I wanna say about nine hundred dollars a person, somewhere around there.
They used to be in Richmond, did you?
Yeah, they've had it in several places throughout uh.
Where daddy had to go when he was.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's a program for planning commissioners and Board of Zoning Appeals members. Um, but Mike Chandler used to, to teach it, he was in Virginia Tech. Um, so now, I have to do some more research on it, and I can't remember right off the top of my head, but um, yeah, sometimes they have classes local by, or by local that you can go to. And maybe if we are not approved for a budget for everybody in one year, we can start staggering, you know, if uh, if you all wanna do that.
Okay, that'd be fun.
Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
With the amendment to ask.
Oh, with, that's right, with the amendment to ask about the per- uh budget for education.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second, but don't we, don't we need a figure? An amount to ask?
I think it's about nine hundred dollars a person, is what she was thinking.
Yeah. We can, we can present, I mean, if we wanna try to say, um we could send three one-year, four the next year, vice versa, whatever, um is it, is everybody interested, or?
Paul's shaking his head.
Nope, not me.
Okay.
Here's one for other eighty bucks.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities out there, we'll just have to find them and see what's close by, and see if it's something you all wanna attend in person, or do you wanna do it online? I know, you know, I think all of you work, and so that can be a challenge to try to get that squeezed in. Um, if it's something that you can do on your own, online.
What's the actual budget figure that you're using here for? Right now?
We don't have an education budget right now.
For the budget for the planning commission, cause I see that we use a certain percentage of it, so it's more than we need.
Yeah, um, so right now, I think, I'm trying to find any partiers. I think I average, you know, we have to meet at least every other month, so I calculate for at least every other month. Um, and then I pretty much know what all of your all's mileage is, unless you, you know, visit sites. So, um, so right now, all they appropriated for mileage was six hundred dollars last year, and then forty-two hundred dollars for um members' payments.
So we've been under budget by about half, over the whole?
Well, it, it averaged, I mean, it just, it, it fluctuates depending on how many applications we get, and if we have to meet every month, so.
How's the county's budget funding right now, are they positive or negative?
I don't know. I don't know, I just know we were requested to try to start making budget cuts for the next year.
I would say I would do it for a price like hers, but I probably wouldn't do a nine hundred dollar one.
Do you all want me to just try to gather some information for you all, and?
Okay.
I mean, we can ask, we could ask the board for a certain figure. Twenty-five hundred, whatever, um if that's why you all wanna approach it that way, we can, we can go that way, and then I can look up some information on where we can find some training, what the prices would be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what that one, that would probably be better.
Okay. Do y'all have a figure in mind, or?
What's, what's the, what's the interest that they cost, how many, you know, Shepherd's not wanting to do it. So maybe six times two hundred dollars?
Five people.
I always ask for more than all. Right?
So ask for twenty-five hundred, okay.
Alright, do y'all wanna amend that motion and make it that way?
I'll make a motion to amend the motion to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Have a second? To amend the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Everybody still with me, okay? And now we need to do uh adopt twenty-twenty-four annual report. Becca, do you wanna go over the reports?
Um, however you all are in the mood, have you all got to review it? I, I don't even remember some of these. And yours goes by so fast.
It does.
Um.
Remember the Harper one, no?
Oh, yeah.
I think the Harpers and the Virginia Outdoor Foundation are two pretty significant ones that we'll remember for.
And Marv's property.
And Marv's property, right.
I think I was about to get somebody incredible, didn't, didn't realize.
Leave it to you, Junior.
Well, I might as well beat it.
What did they end up doing, enjoy?
I'm gonna do a utility point there.
I know.
To, to modifications and what, catching up and things, and so.
What about the conservation part, or another part?
I reckon it would pay for the rest of it, I think it is.
It did, it was.
The board passed it?
Yeah, they were saying, I said it was reasonable.
Yeah, they said once they walked up on the property and actually saw.
Oh, good, yeah.
Be a little bit far in there.
And I appreciate you speaking up at that one.
I think, yes.
I think you did a really good job. I love Lisa a little bit, like, there are.
Read the back of my car, I'm just a girl who loves cows.
She put blue paint on half her face.
Our, our biggest thing is, I would like to get your all's input on the notes and the goals for twenty twenty-five. What, what do you all see, where do you want things to be? Um, is there anything you want us to work on, or to review, um, that you?
I think like right now, if someone had wanted to come in and, just from the public, they would have been able to find us, because we didn't find it very well.
And the time, if, if we could set the time, it was six or six-thirty, pick one.
Say, it's gonna be the boardroom or?
The difference is if we're, if we're with the uh joint, we do six, because then that one would start at seven, and that gives us time, or?
Well, usually, so I try to do the organizational meeting earlier, because it takes more time. And then that way, if we have a joint public hearing with the board at our organizational meeting, then that gives us an hour before the public hearing starts at seven. If we don't have a lot to do, then I try to do it at six-thirty, so you're not having to wait for a long period of time in between the meeting and the joint public hearing. So I do, I, I try to not take up so much of your time, um but if you all wanna set it in stone.
Well, during, during the last year, there was two or three times, two or three people were, uh, got mixed up on the time, or whatever, it's just, it's just a, it's just a.
Yeah, and one meeting, we didn't have any administrative people here at all.
Yeah, we did, I remember that one.
And nobody.
We, we took picture.
It left in the.
I know.
Can't let, can't let that one go.
My name was Dr.
So we're gonna make this uh at six fifteen?
Well, this is for him, isn't it?
I mean, it's whatever you all want to say, it's a lot of time. We're, I mean.
That's it early night.
We're here at five, you know, the board meets at five. Um, we typically always have the joint, you know, the joint public hearings at seven, so. Whatever you all wanna do, I mean.
Whatever we want.
You all have to.
I remember this time, just to look at the time that it was gonna be, so I think we're good.
You all just have to make sure that you have enough time to get you, you know, I don't wanna. Right?
I appreciate it, so we do meet in the off-room instead of the boardroom. If we had a sign or something that told, that told people.
Was there a sign on the door?
No.
I didn't see it.
I put it on.
Is it closed?
Oh, oh, I didn't look at the wall, I just looked at Becca. I asked the honor, or I should put it, and she goes right back.
And sometimes we don't ever know, because like the board, I had to go down right before we started here for closed session. Had I known that the board was gonna be wrapping up about the same time you all were gonna meet, we would have met in the boardroom.
We're, 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 we're expected to petition that public at each meeting, right?
Yeah, if, yeah, I mean, we're always open to citizens' time.
So we need to be real clear about where the citizens need to go, if they want to come, I think.
I, ideally, we would have a boardroom set up for us and for the board, or at least a meeting space. We, we don't, um.
If we, you know, if we know who came a lot, you know, she, you know, if she's not doing that now, that's actually easily.
And, and we do sort of just go with the flow if, if we have, if we have to cross it. But there's been many times, you know, I thought we were gonna have to meet down here, and the board did get finished. And so, stirring back down there, and of course have to get everything set up and everything, so it, it is a logistical nightmare sometimes, but.
I think we're covering ourselves if, if they, if we have it clearly marked, we're, we're in public, she gets it, perhaps even posting that piece.
Well, I know we had a sign up there, but, that's again.
Really? Cause I wouldn't have looked at it on the door, because you opened the door for me.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not a complaint, though.
Yeah.
We're just like.
Well, I think we all pretty well communicate.
It's so rare.
I don't think we've lost since.
It's so rare.
Yeah, we used to go to church together.
Alright, so are you all good with the annual report, or do you all, I mean, do you all have some goals you would like to, other than logistical nightmare of us in this building?
Us in this building, I don't. I think you should get out more and try to get more applications, somehow you can do that.
Well, Leah, I mean, one thing I know that came up during the year was um the comprehensive plan. You know, that was a huge undertaking that the county went through to do that, and um, it was a lot of work, a lot of reading, a lot of editing and stuff, and um, and of course, it was, you know, your all's first hit at to make changes, amendments to it, and things like that, and we had to table it um in order to review it some more. Um, and then we got to the utility. And we, as a whole, had approved the comprehensive plan, but then there were some questions about, maybe we should have looked at the zoning map more, and the comprehensive plan for the schools. So here's your opportunity, if you wanna try to set goals, to try to change some things this year, we can try to set some goals, if you all wanna do that.
Who pointed out the uh constructive criticism for looking at the zoning map a little more for the comprehensive plan? Where did that come from, board supervisors?
Leah.
Well, the board, the board also has the opportunity to accept or reject whatever you, we send, and send it back, reject it, or with amendments or what have you. And why have, why have a meeting if it's so set in stone, why even have a meeting that the public can attend to make a variance or some change, so you've gotta have the public's input.
And we had public hearings for the comprehensive plan.
And you, and you, and you take that, that consideration, if there's no, no one opposes it, things are easier to happen.
Well, unfortunately, that's what we get, a lot of the citizens don't even know there's a comprehensive plan. Um, but we do, and when we, and I'm just not picking on them, but when the utility matter came up, you know, there was a lot of discussion about should it be approved because of the proximity to the schools? Well, you know, that whole area there is zone commercial, so I mean, if, if you, and I, I think you had even said that we probably need to look at the comprehensive plan to review the land uses around the schools. So, I'm just throwing it back out there, if that's what you all want to look at, you know, we can set a committee, put it in the goals to maybe review it again, we have to review it every five years anyway.
And I think my main point was, when we were talking about that, was getting VDOT to look at the area there, just to keep the children and stuff safe, maybe put, you know, dancing or something, I don't know.
Well, and I think that VDOT's getting ready to get, I was in, I sat in the last board meeting, and um the employees of Blue Ridge Knives are concerned about the, um there's not a turning lane there, and so they've asked for an, a study to be done by VDOT, um because they're, they want it to be in no passing zone through there. Um, I believe there's been some employees that have pulled out to the right, but traffic coming south, there is a passing lane there, and so they're trying to pass as somebody else is pulling out from work, and I think there's a timing thing that they've maybe had some close calls. Um, so I think VDOT is looking at all of that stuff there, but I don't know that that will change anything.
Okay, so if you all want to adopt the goal, or the plan like it is, or I'm sorry, the report like it is, we can.
Do you have a motion?
I'll wait.
Just have a second to adopt it as a jeans, damn.
Yeah, I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor? Um, the ordinance committee appointments is next on the agenda.
I think we, we don't always appoint committees, I think last year what we did was we decided to um just appoint a committee if we needed one, we need one. Um, and we're gonna have an ordinance committee right after this. I thought I would just hit you all, instead of you all having to come back again. Um, but it's just, you know, the ordinance committees is, you can volunteer, Hazel couldn't appoint people.
Yeah, anybody volunteering, Bobby?
I feel like I'm probably my quote. What's the timing for the meetings, where they? What's the timing for the meetings, are they still like three or something, is that, wasn't it?
Well, I mean, tonight, it may take five or ten minutes.
Yeah, but I mean.
That was the comprehensive plan, that was very involved. Um, we're not having anything like that, this is just a, for any zoning ordinance.
Well, I, how many has to be on it?
Three.
Okay, I'll be one of them.
I'll nominate Hazel.
We are volunteering, I mean, not, not, not appointing people, I've done volunteer.
I'll do it with you.
Okay. Alright, who's brave enough to step in, Leah?
I think Junior.
You have to let me get, I'm on the planning commission in, in Saltwood too. But we just reconstituted after who knows how many years. So this, you know, if you want to let me get, go through the learning curve here times two. Because we're in the midst of trying to go through our comprehensive plan. And, yeah.
It's, it's a big, sorry, it's a big undertaking.
We were out of compliance, and I mean, it's, and there have been no review, I mean, we're, we're just, we're basically starting from scratch. And it's, I mean, imagine if y'all didn't, we didn't have any help. I mean, we don't, we don't have anybody to help guide us over there, so.
I think they got the best.
Is that what we're going to, five K commissioners?
Junior will do it, he'll do it.
What?
Probably so, Hazel, he'll do it.
We got a lot of confidence in you.
We found a victim.
We got a lot of confidence in you. Wait, don't, we're kind of low, yeah.
If, if you do this one, then you won't have to be on the next one.
The other one?
For, for junior kids.
I mean, we didn't have an ordinance committee meet at all last year.
We did.
So tonight might be the only night that you have to meet.
Okay.
You need to inform the motion, move those three, the members, I'll move, I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Do we have any citizens for citizens' time?
No.
Okay. Uh, other business, well, I have other business, I'd like to introduce everybody to David Buchanan.
Mr. Buchanan.
Mr. Buchanan is what Junior said. But, um, he is here in taking David Spence's, uh, position.
You don't have to learn somebody else's first time.
Just remember, I thought that was great when I saw that. But, um, would you like to tell us a little bit about you, or?
Uh, I can, if you, I, uh, I grew up in Rich Valley, we farmed. And, uh, graduating high school, I went Saul, we were closer there than to Rich Valley. And, uh, went to Edward Henry, and, uh, my first round was banking also. I was with Saul in banking, having an, uh, Assistant Marketing Director, Western Region Headquarters, but that was a long time ago. And I taught for thirty years in Rich Valley, Northland Middle, and retired twenty-twenty-one, and love it.
Yeah.
You should always try it if you have the chance. And, uh, but it's, um, I've, uh, Junior actually asked me about would I be interested in serving, and, and he said he would talk to, you know, throw my name out to Roscoe, but public service, I've served, this is my, I served twenty years on the Industrial Development Authority in Saltwood from, uh, or right at nineteen, nineteen eighty-six to two thousand four. And was reappointed to the IDA, and then appointed to the planning commission there the same night. Because we did reconstitute the planning commission, because as I said, we were out of compliance. And, uh, I mean, we, there, we needed a lot of things done over there in Saltwood, and we were making an effort. And, uh, so, uh, I tell Junior, if Roscoe wanted to nominate me, I'd be proud to serve, I appreciate being over here.
Well, why the heck?
I appreciate that.
I'm not as mean as they say. Do we have any questions, comments from any of the other commissioners?
I have a question about the, uh, getting sworn in, when do we, when, when do people need to be sworn in again?
When you're reappointed.
Yeah, so every four years?
Unless you're filling a half of a term or whatever.
When Becca tells you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next thing on the agenda is to adjourn.
Oh, can I, can I add something? I did this contact list, I just want to make sure that we've got everybody's up-to-date information. If everybody's getting everything, we won't need to do this, but I just want to make sure everybody's getting everything properly. Um, and I know, David, I told, I told you that, um, I was going to be throwing out a Mount Rogers Planning District, uh, appointment recommendation, um, but I learned that Tony's appointment does not expire until twenty-twenty-six. Um, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I was wrong on that, I thought it was every, every year thing, but it's not.
He's probably dealing with it on the Saltwood side too, right?
Uh, we, we have, Aaron was our interim town manager, and, uh, he's, he really impressed me. Aaron's, he does good job.
But I've learned that our, our appointment, um, on the planning commission is, I guess you, for lack of better words, it's more of a ceremonial type role. Um, I think you're invited.
But you do get the reports of what they're doing, and working on budgets and stuff like that.
But typically, I think they only meet once a year unless you're on the executive committee, I think is how it goes, so.
It's a meal, golf course.
Did you get to go there?
I didn't go the last time, so I failed the planning commission on that one.
Well, I'd be more than happy to take your place for the meal this year.
I've been trying to come.
You just want meal, I don't say.
Yeah, I just said the meal, that's all I said. I, I have one item that was in an email from you, whether we liked the link or the PDF. I liked the PDF, that was my preference.
Okay.
If you.
Yeah, okay, I know sometimes the files can get too large, and so they don't go through. So there may be occasions where we have to send you the link, but if you like the PDF, that's fine. It's actually easier for me. Yeah, and we just run into problems when we have packets. That's usually when you get the link, but. So you all liking the publications coming out, so you?
They're interesting.
Cool. Okay. Do you look at your email?
Don't leave email, don't leave email, he'll, he'll hold it against us, he don't know what's going on.
Might be a good idea to text him and tell him you sent him an email.
Check your email.
That's funny, yeah, okay.
Well, Leah, when you get the email, text Bobby and say, did you get this?
Yeah, or just print it off twice like I did.
Yeah, that's right, do that. Okay, with all that is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, this meeting's adjourned.
So now if my three ordinance committee people will stay behind.
Do you want people?